Good afternoon, everybody. Great. Thank you all for attending our meeting, getting here early. We're about one minute late. I was waiting on a quorum. I think I haven't now. So I sincerely hope that everyone is feeling well and finding ways to stay warm. It's been really cold. And I understand we're gonna keep that for a few more days. If you should ever need to know what decisions were made at board meetings, feel free to reach out to our superintendent, our board members, or Mrs. Hayes. Minutes of our meetings are posted on the website after they are approved during the following month's meeting. We encourage everyone to stay informed. The correct knowledge is power. I have this distinct honor and pleasure to introduce our pastor for today is Elder Quavion Richardson, Pastor of Union Grove Church on Lisbon Street in Clinton. I want to read you a little bit about Elder Richardson. Elder Quavion Richardson began his career in ministry at the age of six. He calls that bootleg preaching, okay? Meaning preaching without being properly licensed all over the state of North Carolina. In May of 2013, he preached his trial sermon at the age of seventeen. In June of 2020, Minister Richardson completed his bachelor's degree in Religious Studies at the Goldsboro Disciples Institute of Religious Education and was later ordained as an elder at the Goldsboro Raleigh District Assembly. Elder Richardson is also a graduate of Fayetteville Technical Community College with an associate degree in teacher preparation. He is currently enrolled at Fayetteville State University, pursuing a bachelor's degree in middle grades education. Yay. He has been the senior pastor of Union Grove Church of Christ, Disciples of Christ of Clinton, North Carolina since June of 2021. Elder Richardson is currently employed with Clinton City Schools as a middle school math teacher. He is happily married to Minister Kendra Richardson, and together they have four beautiful children. Help me welcome Elder Richardson.
Good evening, everyone. We're grateful for the opportunity to come and to say this prayer over this meeting. Let us pray. Loving and gracious God, you are indeed the giver of all good gifts. And we thank you today for all your blessings, for the successful outcomes of our school events, and for all our staff members, both the teaching and support members. We ask that you bless them abundantly, and we continue to seek your wisdom, guidance, courage, and strength. Be with us in our deliberations and help us to be wise in the decisions we make for the good of all those who have placed their trust and confidence in our leadership. Give us the insight to lead with integrity, that our decisions may reflect what is right and what is good. Keep us from short-sightedness and pettiness. Help us to make decisions that are good for all and guard us from blind self-interest. Dear Lord, grant us the humility to always seek your will in all that we do and we say. All glory be to you, loving God, now and always through Christ and the Holy Spirit forever and ever. Amen.
Thank you, Elder Richardson, for that inspirational prayer. Feel free to come back and join us anytime, or you may stay the rest of the evening. Thank you for joining our staff at Sampson Middle School and for your many contributions to our community. We really do thank you. I welcome students and their parents, staff, community, all board members, those who are joining us in person, and those who are joining us live stream. A special thanks to Mr. Lowe for assisting with the technology today. Today is Tuesday, December 3, 2024, and I officially call today's meeting of the Clinton City Schools Board of Education to order. Our theme is One Dark Horse, United with Purposeful Action. Our vision is our destination, where we are going and when we plan to get there. Our mission is our purpose, our goal, why we exist. It inspires us to action. Our core values are what we believe. Our values drive us and motivate us to continue the course of action. Our goal is to deliver our theme, One Dark Horse, United with Purposeful Action, to realize our vision and our mission and to fulfill our core values every day. I hope you had a fantastic Thanksgiving holiday. We are nearing the end of the first semester and approaching the holiday season and winter break. We won't have another board meeting until January 27th, so this is like our last meeting for this calendar year. Many thanks to everyone for working hard every day and for making every minute of every day count. Find ways to work together, help each other, and listen to each other as we promote energy, pride, and excitement in our schools. Have a safe and happy, enjoyable holiday season. Enjoy your family and friends. Congratulations to our Clinton High School men's soccer team for winning the state 2A championship in Matthews a couple weeks ago. Thank you to all the faithful Dark Horse fans who braved the cold weather to cheer the Dark Horses to victory. Great job to the coaches, the players, the parents, the families, and the fans. So proud of your accomplishments. I am pleased to announce that we will be joined later this afternoon, about 5:30, by our November Students of the Month and their parents, and their family members. They are already exhibiting our theme. We will adjourn this meeting today no later than 6:20 PM to transition to the auditorium for the Sampson Middle School and Clinton High School band concerts. Our deepest gratitude is extended to our frontline and essential workers, those who care for us and protect us. As everyone knows, we can't do this work alone. Your hard work, commitment, and dedication are recognized and appreciated. Our thoughts are also extended to our students, employees, and their families who are coping with sicknesses and the loss of loved ones. Please continue to keep our Western colleagues and their families in your thoughts and prayers. Several of the school districts have reopened while others are still coping with the damage left by Hurricane Helene. Multiple lives were lost in addition to damage to roads, homes, churches, and businesses. Again, I'll say thanks to our vice chairperson, Pastor Emanuel, and others for assisting with the recovery efforts. Pastor Emanuel was there a few weeks ago. Please remember our city, county, state, national, and our international leaders and partners as we address all the challenges that we face today. No matter who or what we are today, we can all be better tomorrow. We are stronger together. I will begin with a roll call. Please answer as I call your name. Board members and attorney, Mr. Jeremy Edgerton.
Present.
Mr. Edgerton is joining us remotely. He should be present in a few minutes. Pastor Rusty Emanuel.
Present.
Mr. Clark Hales.
Present.
Dr. Oscar Rodriguez.
Present.
Ms. Carol Worley. Ms. Worley should be joining us shortly as well. Attorney Rebecca Williams.
Present.
Thank you, Attorney Williams. Superintendent and staff, Dr. Wesley Johnson.
Present, Madam Chair.
Ms. Emily Devane.
Present.
Mr. John Lowe.
Present.
Dr. Teresa Malinas.
Present.
Dr. Malinas is joining us remotely. Ms. Sheila Peterson.
Present.
Dr. William Van.
Present.
And Ms. Nicole Hayes.
Present.
Thank you for all of others in our audience. I think we have the Sampson Middle School School Improvement Team with us today and the Clinton High School School Improvement Team. I think I saw Michael Hardison walk in. Thank you to Mike and everybody else that's here. So everybody, please stand and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Thank you. The next section on the agenda is public comments, and no one has registered for this session. So we'll move to approval of the board agenda. Board members, you've had an opportunity to review the agenda. I ask for a motion to accept the agenda as it's written.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we accept the agenda as written.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hales. All in favor of adopting the agenda as written, let it be known by the word aye. Thank you. Opposites have the same right. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. There are several items on the consent agenda. Again, you've had that opportunity to review that. Give you another second to look over that. And I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Hales. Could I get a second? Second by Mr. Edgerton. Thank you. All in favor of approving the consent agenda as it's presented, let it be known by the word aye. Aye. Thank you. Motion carried. Next item is curriculum instruction. Dr. Malinas is gonna introduce our guests for the afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Welcome from Colowee. You thought you were cold. We're just a little bit colder up here. We are working with secondary math teachers. Mr. Green is with me and our curriculum math lead to do some math visioning works to create an equitable, high-quality instructional vision for Clinton City Schools. So excuse our absence. I would like to introduce Sampson Middle School first. They are going to share their school improvement plan for 2024-25.
Thank you, Dr. Malinas, and keep the cold weather in the mountains, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Johnson, your cabinet, we thank you today to allow us time to move about, to show you how we are going to improve Sampson Middle one dark horse at a time. Before we get started, we did a comprehensive need, or I did a comprehensive need of the school to just find some things that we need to improve in, and there were several, but we're gonna capitalize on three, which is gonna be small group instruction, we're gonna capitalize on rigor, and we're gonna capitalize on actual vocabulary. So today we'll get started, and our vision is about 2026 Clinton City School would be a deprimitarian learning of a Southeast improving one dark horse at a time. We're still keeping that attached as the district. Our mission is to educate all students to their highest level of academic performance to support the social and emotional and prepare them to become productive and contributing members of modern society of Clinton City. With me, go ahead, go ahead, John. With me, I have my usual, but we have two new ones that's with us tonight, and they are just frantic, but they're gonna do just fine. They're gonna do just fine. We have this gonna present goal one. It's going to be Ms. TK Carw, which teaches seventh grade ELA.
Hello to all. So I'll briefly discuss the reading goal for ELAs for Sampson Middle. So by 2025, we will increase overall grade level proficiency in reading to forty-five point five percent. Reading proficiency for the 2023-24 year as measured by the reading EOG was forty point five percent. Okay, so this year, SMS has taken a more comprehensive approach to help move students out of low performance. And some of the key action items for improvement are monthly data digs to review data, data, and determine appropriate tiers of support for each student. Frequent and structured PLCs. We've been trained to how to successfully carry out PLCs, which this is where we analyze student performance, collaborate, and reflect on best practices. Advent strategies are school-wide. Teachers, we are implementing techniques to help enhance critical thinking skills, collaboration, and organizational skills. Purposeful vocabulary instruction. We're using within the classrooms more academic and content-specific vocabulary. Intentional INE groups. These have been organized based on scores like I Ready Data, and the students have been grouped to basically address the learning gaps and specific needs. We provide instructional support for those who are struggling and enrichment for those who are somewhat advanced. And finally, targeted small group instruction. This is where we're allowed to differentiate lessons in a small group setting to then address academic gaps. Our data sources are EOGs, I Ready Diagnostic Data, MTSS, and check-in data, grades, progress reports, now weeks' grades, and classroom-based assessments. Thank you. He doesn't want to introduce me. I feel some kind of way. It's called we know.
Our next go, which is go-to is on is math. She's an old shoe, but she's a good shoe. I'm Ms. Felicia Everett.
See, I didn't know he was gonna call me a shoe. Hi, good afternoon. By 2025, we will increase overall grade level proficiency in mathematics to forty-six and five tenths percent. Math proficiency for 2023-2024, as measured by the mathematics EOG, was forty-one and five tenths percent. So our goal, we know, is to move about twelve students in every grade level. Just because I'm here. That's what it is. So our goal area, our key action items, you will notice are a lot like what we are using for ELA. Especially when we talk about those intentional INE groups. When we pulled our I Ready data, we looked at the groups that they gave us, but we had to go a little bit deeper. For instance, I have a student that's in my homeroom. He's classified as AIG, but he was put in one of the lower groupings because he has one area that he's really low in. Well, it didn't make sense to put him in that low group and keep him there when it was only one thing that was holding him back. So our groupings are based on the fact that we can pull him when we're going over that part that he's low in. So we're doing more of that, and then even down to is the way we're doing INE right now working. So instead of waiting till the end of the year to go, ooh, we need to come up with a plan, we're consciously always thinking about what can we do? Even down to it might not look the same way in sixth grade as it does in seventh grade or eighth grade. Being conscious of the fact that even grade levels in classes need different strategies. And then we'll go to our targeted small group instruction. That goes back to building the capacity of our teachers. A lot of teachers are hesitant about doing small group instruction, but we're putting in place some things so that everybody feels comfortable, even such as Dr. Malinas had us at C slash NCAT, learning about number fluency along with going from concrete to representational to abstract, because a lot of our kids are stuck in concrete, but we gotta know what that looks like and what we can do to get them to that next tier. We also have to get teachers comfortable with the fact that, let's be honest, the reason we have in these debates on Facebook about Order of Operations problems is because the way it was taught was not the right way. Otherwise, if it was the right way, everybody would've got it. So it's thinking about that and the struggles with that. How do we address that so we don't send children off into the world and have another generation of people fighting on Facebook about which is the correct answer? But that means we have to be flexible about how we teach such things. So again, you have people who are at the very concrete level. They need you to draw it out. That's what we need some of the people on Facebook to do, draw it out so they can get the right answer. So we are thinking how, when we're looking at this student's work and they're at this level, how can I get them to see where it is when it's representational? Instead of you drawing all these little pictures, how can we make that into numbers? And then we go to abstract when we start to talk about our algorithm. So we are also being very intentional on what our students need and what our teachers need. We are sending people off to get trained so they can come back and share with our teachers in the building. So it's no need to go and find some big fancy person with a name when we have people who have that ability right in the building. So we want to give just in time training to people. So not only are we building the capacity of the teachers, we are also building the capacity of the students. Now, when we're looking at this, we're coming from the same data sources as ELA. We're looking at our EOGs, our I Ready Diagnostic Data, our NTSS data, our NC check-in datas, classroom grades, and classroom assessments.
And goal three will be presented by our chair, Mr. William King.
You're not a big, big name today. Goal three deals specifically with students with disabilities. We know that this is one area that our students are very low in. As a matter of fact, we are designated as an ATS I school. That is for schools that are typically low performing with, in the area of students with disabilities. Good news to report there. Last year's EOG scores, we were at eighteen point four percent, and that was almost an eight-point growth over the previous year. So we're going in the right direction. Our goal this year says that we will move our students with disabilities to an overall average of twenty-three percent. That is a five percent growth, and we feel that that is manageable. We have two approaches that we're doing that in. The first is something that we've not done at Sampson Middle School in about eight years. We have developed a small group math instruction class just for students with disabilities. Based on IEPs, that class is capped at twelve students. Those students typically have scored on average at the twenty-seventh percentile or lower more than two of the last three years on their EOG in math. They also have scored less than three grade levels, or I'm sorry, three or more grade levels below their current grade level. That's our criteria for those students. So we're talking about our lowest EC students. We still are having push-in math class. Over half of our EC students on each grade level are in a, what we call an inclusion math class. So there is an EC teacher pushing into that regular math class to assist them. But the new thing is this smaller group math class that we have. John, if you want to go to the next, the reading screen there. The second thing that we have done is we have transitioned the reading intervention program that we've been using. We've been using a program called Language Live. It was a hybrid-based program where the students received direct instruction half the time, and then they were online half the time. We did see good results with that program, but historically, the standard language reading program has provided better results for our students in Clinton City Schools. And so we made a decision. It was kind of a two-pronged decision. Number one, there were some data issues with the state of North Carolina and Voyager Sopris, which is the company we get the program from. They said, the company said they were not gonna comply with North Carolina's privacy orders. So we went to a second program, which is the Language Fourth Edition. It is one hundred percent direct instruction. It covers all the major areas of reading, from phonological awareness to phonics to vocabulary. There is some comprehension built into this program. Those students are assessed three times a year specifically on that data, and we do growth monitoring through that program as well. We also, the language program is done as a forty-five-minute, five-day-a-week pull-out program. Those kids are in a small group setting. That class is not capped at this point, but we want to keep it below twelve so that we can do the direct instruction that we need. We found out something this year. We have grouped, right now there are twelve kids in that group, in that lower group. We have identified four students out of that twelve that are not low. They are extremely low. So one change that we're gonna make in January, we're gonna change sort of the distribution of EC teachers and our teacher that is teaching the sixth grade regular language group is going to take the second half of that first block class, and we're gonna take her all the way back to the beginning level with four kids. So it's gonna be a four-to-one ratio in that classroom to give these kids that intensive direct instruction. And we did that based on some comments from our reading partners across the state, working with DPI, to find other ways to reach the lowest of the low, to get them to the point that they can read on grade level, hopefully by the time they finish middle school. And that is, that class will just be for sixth graders. We still provide push-in ELA support, or reading support in the regular language arts classroom. So every child who's receiving language also has an EC teacher pushing into their language arts class. So that gives them additional opportunities for instruction there. When we get to how we're gonna monitor all this growth, we are going to continue to follow the same tools that we talked about before, using I Ready Data, using NC check-in data. But the language program specifically creates its own unique set of tracking data that we can use to show growth as well.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Those four kids, I know it's a small group, but are they newer students? Or have they been with us from the beginning? And then did they just fall through the cracks and we're just catching them? Or have they been with us the whole time, or are they?
Off the top of my head, three of them I know have transferred into us within the last two to three years. One of them transferred in this year. The fourth one, I am unsure of. But the way that works, that language class is recognized as an exploratory class. So by, and it's a year-long class anyway. What we're gonna be able to do is second semester, maybe they were supposed to have language and then PE in that split class. We're just gonna flip them. They're gonna go to PE and then go back to language. So the teacher, the biggest change for her is we will move her planning, but it's gonna actually benefit her because she'll get a full planning period out of it now. Thank you.
Our next presenter, which is my friend, we looked at ELA, we looked at math, but we also recognize that we need some help in ELL, English Language Learning. So we put that as one of our goals as well so that we can address those. And I'll come back at the end and share some information with you that I found out we're not as bad as we think we are. Ms. careers.
Hi, everybody. Our main goal for this 2025, next year, is to increase our progress by fifteen point one percent. And last twenty, the year 2023-2024, it was ten point one percent of ELA students met overall progress requirements. What we're gonna do is like something that we didn't have before is our PLC meetings, including the ELA teachers. So ML teachers are gonna have the opportunity to meet with the content area teachers. And that's gonna be a great help because of the new standards that we have. We need to work language together with the content. So before, we have only language. We didn't have that crosswalk relationship between content area and the language. So that's our main goal. And we are gonna be reviewing the ML data and using the I Ready, because the I Ready is gonna give you, it's gonna give us like the areas where the ML are weak. So we can also help content teachers with those areas too. So we also have new program in our ESL classes. We have new books that are gonna help us with the speaking part that is very hard for the students to accomplish. speaking part that is very hard for the students to accomplish. Um, they will have the opportunity to record themselves, and they will listen to themselves, and I will listen to them and check with them and do individual uh feedback. Because what they are ashamed of is to speak in front of everybody. So that's going to be, uh, that will give them more um confident when they speaking, when they speak to um answer the questions that the test ask. So we also are going to do more planning um together. We're again with the content teachers. And we're gonna try to, or we are going to um try to adapt the new standards and continue working with our students um in order to make them successful in the English uh language. Thank you.
Right here, we're dealing with um indicators. Um, now one or two is dealing with the money, the finances. Um, along with uh resources, allocation and money. We're going to do things like identifying amounts of funds from state and local funds so we know what money we have to use to remediate our babies with. Um, hiring additional staff of math and reading. We have a math interventions now that is helping us out. Um, we're just waiting for our funds to drop so she can begin. And I'm looking at a reading person that can help us out as well. Um, tutoring in the spring, preparing for EOGs, uh, purchasing different uh additional materials for for EOGs, and providing additional professional development for teachers that specifically need uh professional development for certain areas, not just to be going on a professional development, but something that's going to help us grow our children. Um, and the data source are just like um, we've been using the school report card. You can go to your next one, John. And I put this here is not an area, but I wanted you to know that looking at our school safety and discipline, you can see that our um numbers have dropped for our discipline. Um, and the blue, which is twenty-four, twenty-five, um, a lot of those are repeat offenders. Um, and we are trying our best to um get guidance in on those repeat offenders. Um, but we have really, really been doing some work on our discipline to try to make sure that they're in the classroom learning and not in trouble. But then also one thing we looked at too, other than just suspending and putting in ISS, we need to get to the root cause of why the children's especially keep doing the same thing over and over again. So we'll begin to have conversation with those students, me and the administrative staff and the guidance counselor. Um, so to get to the root cause of why they keep getting in trouble. Question answers. Well, let me explain, let me tell you something else I want to tell you. And you saw numbers on um go one, two and three, like thirteen and what have these. So when I say we're not as bad as I thought we are, we're not. Um, we are number two uh in the county of under midway. Um, and there are all the other middle schools below us. Um, it's nothing to hurre about, but we're not as bad as where we were without. Also, looking at using the data, the district, the state platform. Um, some friends and I played with that, been playing with data for probably about two weeks. Um, so they was telling me that Robert Taylor, uh, Dr. Taylor gave them a platform to use to put in the their information to see how many students they need to move in order to become our low performance. I said, well, if you do it for them, you can do the same thing for us. So they sent me the platform. We need to move thirteen children per grade level, per subject, and four EL children to become a C. That way, we're going to focus on our yellow children, and we got almost two hundred of those. So just imagine if we can move those two hundred where they need to be. We will not only be a C, we'll be just about a B. Okay? So we have changed some things around this year. We did, we saw things that need to be done differently. We have gotten people on board that really want to work, I think, and care about the children, their well-being. Um, so we are building relationship, have built good relationships. Um, children, I have done the student advisory team. I got a parent advisory team that's in place. But the students, um, and I'll share this one thing, I think, Dr. Johnson, I've heard it before. Um, I met with them on Monday. And so what I gave them last Monday was to go to their classmates to find out some things they want rewards for, for doing. I said, now, if I'm giving you rewards, that means you have to give me something, right? And they said, yes. So when they came back, I said, what you find out? There's eight of them. Six of the eight says, we just want them to teach us. We tired of these computers. Can they just teach us? And I'm going to share that in my faculty meeting. Um, but that those are kind of things, they had good questions, they had good conversation. But that was the one, the one thing that stuck with me. They said, we just want them to teach us. And for that, I'm grateful for that. Uh-uh, I'm good.
Um, and that's not just on you, and that's not just at your school. We've been having this conversation. We've talked about this whole thing with these computers. And so to hear it now come out of the mouth of the children, we need to do something different. And and we, we got to do something different. Um, if we got to do education different, and if they're telling us, look, it's great that I got a laptop. I'm sick of looking at it. I want the teacher to teach me something. That needs to come from somewhere else. If, and if it's not happening at the building level, it needs to come from a higher up to say, look, this is, it needs to be our expectation of what we want. And okay, I'm, I'm gonna stop. The passion is coming through. I'm, I'm just so glad to hear you share that, that the kids are saying the same thing the adults, some of us have been saying, but the accountability piece, it needs, it needs to go, it needs to trickle on down, and we need to set that expectation. And then there needs to be some accountability that that is what's happening. Thank you for your presentation.
Another level that we went to, we went to the individual student. Um, we were usually looking at subgroups, but we went to the individual students to see their needs. Then I'm going back to EVOS to if, see what standard or what these teachers are good at when we go to redo our grouping.
So, Dr. Facen.
Yes, sir.
I, 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 I'm sorry, I'm going to be like Ms. Worley then and cut you off too.
That's fine.
So I, so I think first and foremost, thank you for taking the initiative to talk to the students. I think it's about time we started listening to people we serve, and uh I commend you for that. I think my question is going to be very straightforward is what can we do as a board? And I'm speaking for myself. Anybody that wants to join is more than welcome to, that's their choice. What can we do to support you in making that change for the students? Plain and simple. How can we get to a C, to a B, to an A? What support you need from these folks on this table or from myself?
Keep being
To make that happen.
Keep being supportive like you're doing. I'm sure there's something you can do, can't think right now.
Uh-huh, that's what I want to know.
It might be some materials. I'm looking into some uh materials that we can use as you get closest to EOG. Used to, we used to have the actual prep books that we had. So I'm looking to see um where we can get those from. I'm also looking to take some of, a couple of my folks with me this summer um to Charlotte to uh effective PLC. Um, so I'm sure there's something, but just keep supporting us like you're doing.
Well, please think about it.
Okay.
Think about it so we can get this pendulum moving.
Okay.
Thank you.
Dr. Facen, I have a question. Um, you talked about discipline and, you know, repeaters and what you're kind of doing with them. What about student attendance? I know we're talking about staff attendance a lot, but what, what's the student attendance like? Are they in school?
They are. Um, it's not as bad as it was last year. Well, attendance is more bad, tardiness was bad. Um, this year, they're still tardy, but not as bad as it was last year. So what we're doing, I'm trying to think away, or my sit team, think of ways to reward them. I think Mr. King had written a grant um that we're going to utilize the summer for those students that in, in school and on time. So it's not as bad as it was last year. It's not where I want it, but it's not as bad as it was.
Thank you. Other board members?
Madam Chair, I don't have, I don't have a question. I'm going to ask John to pull something up for me. He's going to go to my good news right quick. Uh, it's item number three in good news, John. Um, so he's going to be logging into that. And then while we've got several of these educators in front of us, uh, go to uh December, it's number one, John. But this is number three in that first document. It's already up there, you'll see it as soon as you log in. So we, we received this information, um, I believe it was week before last. And this is a US News and World Report that lists Sampson Middle School as one of the best middle schools in North Carolina. Uh, why, why is this important and why am I bringing it up? Um, because uh, North Carolina deems Sampson Middle School uh as being a low-performing school. Uh, uh, Tony has already mentioned that we were number two in the county, but I'm going to give you some more numbers. If John, if John logs in, if John hits that um, that web link right there, that first one, John, it's going to show you that um, well, maybe you have to, maybe you have to paste it into another link, John. That's what I had to do. Um, but it's going to show you when John pulls it up that we are the one hundred and seventy-second middle school in the state. That doesn't, that doesn't give you any clarification until you know that there are seven hundred and seventy-four traditional middle schools in North Carolina. We rank number one seventy-two. So if you take one seventy-two and divide it by seven hundred and seventy-four, we are in the seventy-eighth percentile of all middle schools in the state. If you add in the other and hundred and forty-seven charter middle schools, that gives you nine hundred and twenty-one middle schools. And we are in the eighty-first percentile of all middle schools in the state. Uh, I don't know which one they use, the seven seventy-four or the nine twenty-one. Uh, but I just wanted to uh to clarify, since we are a low-performing middle school, and many people thinks, oh, you're doing terrible, you're doing bad. We're doing better than seventy-eight percent of all middle schools in the state. And I want to say thank you to Dr. Facen and and uh Kenan Lanier and all the staff members. You're doing a fantastic job. Are there areas we need to improve on? There absolutely are. But are there things that we are doing well? I would say being seventy-eighth percentile, I don't know if any of y'all remember the old CAT test, but if you got the CAT test and you got into seventy-eighth percentile, you were doing pretty doggone good. Uh, so congratulations to Dr. Facen, congratulations to his team. Again, they were recognized by the US News and World Report as one of the best middle schools in the state of North Carolina, and that's something we're going to continue to stand on. What I would say as a superintendent, what does that mean for the board? Means we need to continue to advocate for changes into the accountability system of North Carolina. Middle schools are unfairly and unjustly uh criticized and critiqued uh because they don't have other um uh
Factors.
Factors that that make up variables that make up the school performance composite. Uh, so again, being in the seventy-eight percentile is much to be uh celebrated, and we thank you and your staff for doing a great job and a great presentation.
Uh, uh, that's awesome news. And seeing this now public-public, um, we need to celebrate that more than we do anything else. So I, about my colleagues, but I'd love to see it blasted on our social media platforms and um, a, a banner at the school uh in that regard.
Thank you all. Keep up the great work. And Ms. TK, you did great.
It's one of our, one of our employees of the month this month.
Okay, there we go. There we go again. All righty, thank you, Dr. Johnson, for sharing that good news from the US News and World Report. That is fantastic. All righty, uh, Dr. Malinas, you want to introduce the high school?
Absolutely. Um, the high school school improvement team is there, I believe led by Ms. Phillips. And then Mr. Green is here, and he can chime in as he needs to. Ms. Phillips, you got the floor.
Push your button.
Good afternoon, everyone. I have the distinct pleasure of introducing my team. Tonight, we are so proud and pleased to present our school improvement plan. Of course, you know that Mr. Green is um along with um Dr. Malinas in the cold weather, but we, he does send greetings. And also, please chime in, sir, if you would like, as we present our plan tonight. First.
Yes, ma'am. Loud and clear.
Yes, sir. First of all, I would like to introduce my fellow colleague, Assistant Principal, Mr. Johnny Williams. This is Dr. David Yarsheski. He is our sit co-chair as well as our health science teacher, CTE representative. And I'd also like to introduce Ms. Ashley Slater, our sit team chairperson, EC chairperson and EC teacher extraordinaire. I'm going to begin um tonight by, first of all, we do have one person that is absent, Ms. Taylor DeLeon. So we're going to be filling in and making sure that our presentation is a productive one for you. So we'll be filling in for her. I'm going to again, begin reiterating our vision and mission. We like to think of this as a, the life breath, a breath of life for us. And every conversation we have, we like to strategically begin with our vision and mission in our school. Um, it kind of draws us all to a common purpose. So whenever we're speaking with our teachers, our students and staff members, we always go back to our vision and mission. Um, again, by twenty twenty-six, Clinton High School will be the premier learning community in the Southeast, improving the world one dark horse at a time. You know, we take that to heart because I'm a dark horse at heart, and I love to make sure I say that all the time, I feel it when I say it. Um, our mission, Clinton High School is to educate all students to the highest level of performance, to support them socially and emotionally, and prepare them to become productive and contributing members of a modern society. Uh, we're going to begin, first of all, our SMART goal, once again, kind of reiterates our mission and vision. It talks about um educating all of our students at Clinton High to the highest, to the highest potential um to become the premier learning community in the Southeast. We have two goals embedded um to make sure that we're reaching our, our goals in our statements today. First of all, our first goal is to increase our overall school performance goal or grade from fifty-eight to sixty-three percent to in, and to also increase the average grade level proficiency of all EOC-tested subjects, which are is our Math One, Math Three, English Two, and our Biology classes from thirty-eight percent to forty-five percent by the end of this school year, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. In order to reach these goals, um, we have what we have in our school improvement plan, also called Endstar Wise Ways, which are just strategic best practices that we kind of use in statement form to help us know how to reach our goals. So all three of the Endstar Wise Ways that you see are what we're going to utilize through our strategic practices to make sure that we meet our goals. The first one is our school will have aligned resource allocation, which is of course money, time, human resources within schools instructional priorities. That means that we will strategically meet with our staff to make sure that all of our allocations are to make sure we have equitable learning opportunities for all of our students to purchase resources that will help to close the achievement gap. That means we look at um demographic data, we look at academic data, and everything that we can to make sure that we're collectively getting resources that's going to help close those gaps in achievement. Our second wise ways, um, standard will be, all teachers will frequently assess student progress using a variety of evaluation methods and make sure that appropriate curriculum adjustments are used based on results. We know that we try to always make sure we're data-driven. So that means when we get that check-in data, whenever we get those formative assessment results, we always strategically use our PLCs to discuss that data, make sure that we disaggregate it, to make sure we target small groups in classrooms for students that need that specific intense instruction. We also have um newsletters and things that we disseminate each week so that everyone has a specific focus. For example, we know that to get everyone on the same page, we would like for our teachers to know exactly what we look for when we do walkthroughs. For example, um, we may have our instructional look for for the week may be productive struggle. We want a teacher to know when we walk in and we're looking for productive struggle that week, we give an example of what that looks like. So that that teacher, everyone is on the same page in the building to know these are the types of things that we want you to do to build critical thinking in your classrooms and helps move student achievement forward. Finally, um, our last wise ways, the school implements a tiered Finally, our last wise ways, the school implements a tiered instructional system that allows teachers to deliver evidence-based instruction aligned with the individual needs of students across all tiers. Of course, we know this is our MTSS process. We strategically take all of these wise ways, put them together, and make sure that we use academic behavioral attendance data to make sure that we're reaching all students and that we're giving them the appropriate type of differentiated instruction with a tiered one, where that means all students are getting that regular core instruction that we deliver to everyone. If they need a little bit more intense instruction through tier two or tier three, where we have to have specialized, unique, one-on-one, or smaller group instruction to address unique needs. At this time, Ms. Slater's going to talk to you a little bit about the first wise ways that we've chosen and the key action ways that we have tried to utilize and try to address these issues.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Good afternoon. So kind of to add on to what Ms. Phillips said, we chose one of this first indicator, D 1.02, discussing how we align our resources that we need, manpower, money, other things besides those, and kind of discuss what we can do to move our students forward. You know, everything we do kind of reflects back to our mission statement and our vision statement. So in order to do this, we started at within teams. We kind of discussed within the English team, the CTE team, and said, what, based on the last year, what are some of our areas that we really, if we could just buckle down and nail one area, one group of students, one specific thing, what could we do and how could we move them? Then we came to CIT, and it was almost resounding our ELL students. You know, how can we move those students? Because it doesn't matter in math, English, science, foods. Students who have a second language are having a hard time with these tests, and it is affecting their overall score and their experience in high school, honestly. So from there, we met in MTSS to really discuss how, what programs we use already. You know, we talked to different teams and said, what have we used that works? What have we used that doesn't work? And now we're moving forward recommending some ideas, you know, buying books that a certain set of students would like to read. We do have some internet programs that we have been using for a couple of years, and it's gotten really good results with our students. We want to kind of add on to that. And then dictionaries for all areas to kind of work on that. Can you go back? Sorry. The last thing is, Mr. Green is kind of keeping a spreadsheet of all of that and using all of the information that we learned. We're going to put that together and make decisions from here on forward.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Dr. Yarsheski, I teach health science here at the high school. Specifically, what I'm going to address, the goal, which Mr. Green had asked us all to include as part of our PDP, okay, was Goal 4A. Teachers know the ways in which learning takes place, and knows the appropriate levels of intellectual, physical, social, and emotional development of the students. So that was a school-wide goal that he had asked us all to focus on this year in reference to, you know, the overall goals for the school, okay? And the indicators, all teachers, A 104. All teachers frequently assess student progress using a variety of evaluation methods, make appropriate curriculum adjustments based on the results. What specifically we are doing, okay, for the social and emotional development piece of this, we are working with MTSS and PBIS. You know, we coordinate this in the CIT team as far as addressing, you know, the complete needs of the students. With regard to the academic end of it, okay, what we have done, Mr. Green has requested that we have departmental PLC meetings, and in those meetings, we are looking at the numbers. And I give Kristi Moore a lot of credit because she breaks this down for us. We want the CTE module, and it essentially tells us, you know, level of proficiency for our kids, you know, based on the courses, based on the kids' scores each year, whether they're in the green area, whether they're in the red area. And she has broken that down for us. We have gone through that. We have looked at the EVOs numbers. And essentially, we gear our instruction towards addressing those areas, you know, where the numbers show that, hey, we need improvement here, okay? And, you know, we try and group these kids, you know, based on, and I'm going to use a Malinas term here, the high flyers, those who are in the middle, and those who are low end. We try and address and, you know, create groups, you know, that where we get a balance of the different levels so these kids, in essence, can help one another. Specifically, and I'm going to speak more to CTE, okay, because obviously that's the area I'm in. We evaluate proficiency data from CTE module along with EVOs data, utilize breakdown of data demographically to determine learning levels of our students, and establish small instructional groups driven by this data to provide intervention, appropriate level of instruction based on the students' needs. So we get a breakdown, demographically, we get a breakdown of, you know, individually in each of the courses. And then we gear the instruction towards, hey, where can we improve in these areas? Where are, you know, these kids, you know, kind of falling off the edge? And I guess you can coordinate it with, you know, the standards that we have, and which standards are these kids getting, which standards are, you know, we kind of missing on. And we look at that, and then we basically set up the instruction to address those issues. Personally, what I do with my students, beginning of the year, I give my students a student survey. Okay, I want to see if they understand how they learn. And there's questions on there relative to, hey, you know, what environment do you work best in? Do you work better in groups? Do you work better individually? Would you prefer to, you know, be a leader in a group? Would you prefer to be someone who follows the group? And, you know, kind of questions like that, and it just gives me a little bit better idea individually for each of these students, how they best learn. And then that gives me an opportunity to at least try and touch on all of these areas to allow these kids, you know, the opportunity to show what it is they know. Because, you know, as we know, not everyone learns the same way. Basically, refine delineated tier sheets, okay, determine what data supports moving, okay? Work with MTSS, determine behavioral innovations appropriate to the high school setting, CHS utilized suggestions, PBIS world. Like I said, the social and emotional aspect, okay, we work with MTSS and the PBIS to address that, okay? So I'm looking more at kind of the academic end of it, all right? And I know Clark always has questions about, hey, what are we doing to get involved in the community? I'm glad you asked that, Clark. I give Kim Fan and I give Kim Moore a lot of the credit for this. We have had outside speakers. This was career month here, November in CHS. They had outside speakers. Today and tomorrow, they have the GoPro bus. I don't know if you're familiar with that, but, you know, the kids go out there, and they have different careers on this bus that the kids, you know, they interact, and, you know, they can learn about different careers, what the education is needed for that, what's required to go into that field, and it just gives them a little bit better exposure to different careers. Reality of Money, we had SDCU come and give a presentation on the reality of money. Okay, that was eye-opening. I know I brought my classes down here. It was eye-opening for a lot of these kids to see just what stuff costs, okay? And what they're going to have to earn, what they're going to have to do in order to afford that car, that house, these children, okay? SCC visit, we went and visited a nursing program with a couple of my classes last week. We have the District C program that is offered in the summer, where these students get together and help local businesses troubleshoot. In my classroom this year, and again, I give credit to Ms. Moore, I have Z-Space computers. If you're familiar with them at all, it's virtual reality is what it is. It's a 3D image. And I use it for the anatomy and physiology courses that I teach, where then these kids can pull out a section of the body, and it literally, okay, has a camera. You don't need the goggles. 3D brings it out of the screen. You can rotate it. You can identify, all right, the different aspects, the different parts of the anatomy. It's really interesting, and it helps because the kids are so tech savvy. I, you know, they know more about that program already than I do, okay? They've used it for four months. And then in the spring, excuse me, we are going to have, we've utilized and signed up with the Paxton Patterson Program, okay? And what that is, is we have selected 12 different careers in the healthcare field. And it gives the kids an opportunity to not only learn about a specific career, but there are labs associated with that, where, you know, the kids learn about dentistry. They learn about orthopedics. They learn about sports medicine. And they have labs to supplement and reinforce kind of what they're doing, okay? And they have things on a, it's like a module set up on the computer where they have assessments, they have worksheets. But in addition to, they have activities that reinforce what they have learned. So in that aspect, CTE is, you know, I think we're trying to get the kids out from in front of the computers and get them a little bit more hand-on experience and allow them, because the first question is, well, when am I ever going to use this, all right? And that's what I hear a lot, you know, with math classes. I said, you know, you never know. But you still need to learn it. But this gives them an opportunity, I think, to get a little bit more hands-on, a little bit more of the kinesthetic aspect of it, so that hopefully then the academic end of it, it all falls into place. Thank you.
All right. I'm back again. All right. So our last indicator is A 4.1. Talks about school implementing a tiered instructional system that allows teachers to deliver evidence-based instruction aligned with the individual needs and students across tiers. I think the number one thing that we have changed this year is our PLC standard. Yes, the form is involved and everything, but it's a new approach to how teachers think about how they instruct. You know, a lot of our teachers are veterans, and they are amazing in many, many ways. But a lot of times, they have been doing the same thing for years and years and years. And while that has worked 20 years ago, 10 years ago, maybe even five years ago, maybe the same approach is not working to this group of students. So they actually, the PLC form really involves them looking at what they're teaching, how they're teaching it. You know, are they using the same programs that they used? Maybe a different program would work. Maybe talking to their peers, oh, I used this last week. Let's try this. They can identify a group of students, you know, kind of talked about how those higher fly, the high, the middle and the low. Well, maybe attaching those middle group of students and saying, how can we push them a couple of points just to kind of get them moving? And so that PLC form system has really changed, and that's going to be how it kind of fits into here. The first section is talking about the delineated tiers. That is not a new thing. Last year, the year before that, with MTSS, we were tasked with coming up with, what does it look like for a regular student to go through Clinton High School in eighth, ninth grade math? What do they have to pass? What do they have to learn in order to do well in that class? And so as they came up with it, and it's a building block, we did that in math and reading as well as attendance and behavior standards. What does it look like when a student is not doing well? If they've had three office referrals or whatever, what do we do? So it is a standard that we kind of live by to help students grow. Because again, that's our point, is to get kids to grow. The last bottom one was MTSS. Another thing that we have kind of adopted is the blending of MTSS and PBIS. Many years, we've kind of worked in tandem, I guess, you know, but now it's kind of reaching out and thinking that MTSS needs PBIS to be successful. And so we are going to, you know, we met, we kind of came up with some goals, some like new baseline of what we need to do, and we're excited for what to come. Thank you. That is our presentation. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you, high school. Any questions from the board or comments?
I just wanted to ask, how are the students that are over at Alternative? Is that what we still call it? What do we call it? College Street Academy. Yeah, College Street Academy. How are they factored in, or how are they included? And how are we still serving them even though they're in a different environment? How are we still including them to make sure that their needs are being met at this level?
Certainly, we have our EC program who services those children. And we have faculty members who go up and go over and check on our students. Probably do need to do a better job of taking care of those students, making sure they're not forgotten. We do have, you know, a lot of teachers that check out and go see our kids. We need to get better at that. We have had some occasions where they're there and they haven't seen their teachers. And that's an issue. And we certainly can do a better job of servicing those children there, making sure they're not forgotten. Of course, you know, they can check on them Google Classroom, email and stuff like that, but we have to do a better job of seeing them face-to-face and attending to their needs.
If I can chime in, what Mr. Williams is saying is very true. They do have teachers that check out from the high school and also the middle school that come and check on our students. But not only do they come on their planning periods, they do have access to their teachers, and the teachers do work with them via Google Classroom. That is something that we really, really wanted to emphasize and keep in place in addition to having the teachers come over more frequently and work with them. We have seen an increase in the number of teachers who are coming from both schools. So I am excited and pleased about that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Dr. Brunson asked about, she asked about attendance from the middle school. So how is it going at the high school?
This is Principal Green. Is Principal Green, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
That is something that we have to, we're going to drill it with our MTSS process, Ms. Worley, because we have to see what the correlations between grades and attendance are. We do know that we have certain pockets of students not coming. We jump on that, especially with Ms. Coleman, our social worker. But we are actually, our last meeting we had as an MTSS team was really, just really hammering down on that, to determine how, what are these absences the cause of? Are they causes of suspensions? Are they causes of excused, unexcused absences? We're going to drill a little bit better with that. So right now, I'm going to tell you, it's to be determined as far as if it's bad or good. But we do have questions we're going to ask ourselves each month to see how that's looking at Clinton High School to establish a baseline. And then we'll give you more accurate answers as to whether we're improving or do we need to work on this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Anything else you'd like to add since you're not in the building with us?
Yeah, I don't know if I could have as eloquently presented as my team tonight, so I thank them so much for the work. Yeah, the biggest thing I'll say is the mission and the vision are going to be our GPS. Every decision, every structure we put in is going to be guided by that. And if we follow that, there's no reason we can't win. That's really the message I want to put out, but it can't just be me. As a principal, the CIT team is going to have to be a skilled decision-making body with me. And as you see from Ms. Slater, Mr. Yarsheski, Doc, Dr. Yarsheski, and the Advent team, this is where we're going forward. So I can't speak for last year, but all I'll say is, as long as we're all following the mission and vision, that's what's going to guide every single thing we do in Clinton High School.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
I did want to make one more comment. Mr. Green, I wanted to share, I think, a positive tidbit, especially at the high school level, a lot of times, students hear what they need to do academically. As far as the teacher saying, I need for you to make 100 on your test. This year, we are strategically making sure that we include students in the conversations. We actually share data as far as we let them know their performance score across the state, report card data, the things that we as adults look at to guide and let us know where schools are standing. We include our students in those conversations. We have virtual meetings where the entire student body is aware of that. And we sit down and we talk with our students in these meetings and say, what do you think we can do to help? And we have students coming to us and saying, I think I need tutoring. And we know that we need to be on board, making sure we provide those things. So we are making them take ownership of what they need. That's something that we haven't done in the past. Students actually can say, we have a 58. We need to try to get up to a 63. We're at 38%. We're trying to get to a 45. High school students need to know how to become independent. High school students need to know how to become independent. So we are trying to teach them those skills by taking ownership of where they need to be, so I think that's going to help them. When we have conversations now, it's not only about. Just act, it's not only about sports or different things, extracurricular, they talk to us about academics. I want to raise my math grade, can I talk to my math teacher and we encourage them to do that. So I think that is a step in the right direction will help the students move forward and knowing that they have to take that step to get where they need to be.
This Philip said it very well. We have, we have that conversation, might deal with discipline, it might start with discipline. But doing, you know, that that meeting with the student as far as discipline. We might find out that the student is absent, why that student is absent, that student may work at night, have to work at night. That's why they're tardy, that's why they're they're not there. So it may start off as one thing, but it leads us into a conversation, we can kind of figure out. You know, what's going on in this child's life? Which is really important for our teachers to do, what's, what's going on in this child's life? Why they're late, why they're tardy? What's going on? They may be hungry. Their life is not perfect like ours might might have been. So that's, that's really what we have to do, we found out so much, just. Just sitting down, just talking to the child. You know, find out what's going on, why, why they do certain things, why they act a certain way. But, but just talk.
I'll echo Ms. Phillips, so you know she's not just bringing this up to make a show of it. But in a recent leadership meeting. Um, members of the executive cabinet. Were meeting with schools, Dr. Johnson was leading a dead, a data discussion. And I happened to be with the high school group and Principal Green brought that up, he said. No, our students know our proficiency percentage, I was like, that's refreshing, I'm glad, because some of them. Will take ownership of that, they, they don't want to be thirty eight percent, they, they know what thirty eight percent means and so. It was a, like I said, refreshing that they're sharing that information with the students and making them aware. I think that's a one of the. Various factors they can employ to help move the high school forward.
Mr. Williams and Ms. Vibes, I want it, if if I may. Just to say that I appreciate your proactivity. Instead of your reactivity, let's put it that way. We tend to be very reactive. And we're always trying, like you just said, trying to have the conversation at the last minute. To determine how to increase the thirty eight into forty five. And unfortunately, that causes for other issues. You know, unfortunately, we have seen and and research shows that the dropout dropout rates continue to increase. Because of we, we're not being proactive. So I commend Mr. Green and the whole Clinton City, uh, Clinton High School staff for being proactive. Because there is opportunities for our children to be successful. Whether that is on a CTE career, whether that is going to college. But the reality is the core courses of reading and arithmetic and math. They have to be able to do to be successful out there. So by having those conversations, what I would love to hear later on would be. What are those factors that we're identifying as the factors that are affecting? Is it, is it our instruction? Is it the socioeconomic issues that we're having in our community? What can that be so therefore as a board or as a board member? We can find ways to help. Meet those needs, because that's true, sometimes students come in and this is their safe place. And we have to acknowledge that. And as instructors, as teachers, we have to take the time to talk to our students. It can't all be, well, read, write, write this down. We got to take time because we don't know what's going on in their lives and sometimes that amount of compassion can go a long way. So, so you know, those relationships are important. Those relationships are very important, so thank you, thank you so much for what you and the team is doing.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. Uh, let's give the high school a round of applause. And before they leave, um, high school and middle school, I'm encouraged, I'm, I'm, I'm just ecstatic about what I've heard. One question I do have is both, both teams or both schools had great ideas, great strategies. Great things that you're doing. Is there ever an opportunity that the two groups get together, like there's only a parking lot that separates you? Like all the ELA teachers get together, all the EC teachers get together, all the math. All the parent involvement strategies, all the walk to through strategies. Is there a time or are there times that these two schools get together to share these ideas?
I hadn't looked at it at that perspective, but I have looked at it. Add us, but that's a good strategy that, uh, John, uh, John, I can talk about to speak with the ELA.
And. I'm sorry, uh, and Dr. Brunson, I'll let, let you know that, um. Myself and Tony, we've been, we've started those end roads and the conversations have been had. First, our first step is do our guidance counselors. And we have a middle school math teacher here with us in Colorway. This was all strategic also because a lot of the decisions that we will make next year. As to where students are placed in math classes and English classes are going to begin through the counselors and the teachers. Um, so starting in spring, when I start going over there to meet the middle school students and they come to the high school to take their tours, the traditional things. We're already going to have those conversations about. How students are progressing so that we can have them. Um, not necessarily by uh achievement levels, but where that student will best be served. Um, because that, that is going to be. Uh, our, our success, their success is our success and vice versa, so. Um, thank you for bringing that up because we've been mentioning it. And the counselors have started the conversation and it's just going to keep extending to teachers, counselors, administrators. We, we, we're going to start looking at ourselves as one big campus as opposed to two different schools.
Thank you so much and I, I really do like the individual profiles that you're talking to, to students because. You know, they're why we're here, right? And they can help you and you, you were saying thirty eight percent, forty five percent. If they know it can be like a little competition, a little competitive, like we can do better than they can do. And, and we all, we all win when that happens.
Yeah, that's the spirit we wanted to create. Um, I did not share with our students. The other surrounding schools, that's why I did share that with the teachers. But yeah, that spirit of competition with ourself is going to be key to our growth.
Absolutely, thank you very much. Doc Malinas, you have any, any parting words?
I do not, um, I, I did. Want to say that I thought everyone did really well this evening. Not being able to see people but only hear them gives it a whole different perspective. If you haven't done it before, and I know some of you've done it virtually, so we're just, we're sitting back here cheering with our microphones off that they did such a great job, both schools. So, um, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Oh, okay. We have a few of our students of the month with us, we have a few minutes before five thirty, so. Um, we'll move on to, um. Mr. Lowe and next month we'll have our elementary school, so get ready, guys. Elementary schools in January to do your, um, school improvement plans, thank you. Mr. Love?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I just have a, a very brief set of informational items, Dr. Johnson and I met with some developers from. The Woda Cooper Companies, their base is in Ohio. But they have a southeast team and that's who we met with today to look at our College Street. Property to see if they have any interest in the development. The Woda Cooper Group is solely focused around, they actually like to call it essential housing. As opposed to workforce housing, because those people are essential to communities and. Um, they, they liked what they saw, of course, they've got to do a lot of analysis and we've shared information with them, so I, I thought that meeting went well today. I've linked in some updated quotes, I know there's been a desire to address the football field house doors. Um, our maintenance team was able to get them to secure. But those frames have been there since the building was built, probably in the eighties. And so it, it's got a, a limited lifespan on metal doors, especially when you are celebrating, when you come out and, and trying to. Get pumped up for a game and then when you come back in, so field house doors take some effort. Um, we've had a, actually, uh, Coach Boykin and, and Assistant Principal Johnny Williams gave us a. A, a contact for a new vendor to reach out to. Um, we reached out again to a local vendor, H and Car. There's still thirty thousand to thirty seven thousand dollars to make that happen, we're just trying to see where, where do we fit that in the budget currently? Um, we discussed it in cabinet, our maintenance budget is already at fifty percent. Spent, so I, I don't know that I can take all of a sudden thirty grand out of there. Um, capital outlay has its own commitment, so we'll just have to have further discussions about that.
How many doors, Mr. Sticks?
Well, you, because you've got double doors. On the entrance drive side of the building.
That's right.
Um, and then you've got the two exit doors that come out, so that's four. And then the one on the side, so. You know, and then while you're there addressing doors, you want to address the doors that go into the mechanical room where the lighting controls are. So you end up with seven total doors, two being double doors and the others all being single.
Could you, instead of changing them all out at one time, could you just bust it up? Change the door out here?
It could be, could be a possibility.
And the reason why, the reason why that's so expensive. Now, when Jimmy built that building. Nobody knows if the casing's been filled up with cement. And so they got to beat everything out.
Yep.
That's, that's why it's so expensive.
And you've got to go back with metal doors on that facility, we can't go back with some fiber or. You know, steel with a hollow core, it's got to be solid doors and that, that makes the nowadays, the cost of the metal is really expensive.
So how are we deciding who would, who you're contacting to give us the, the quotes and the bids on the doors?
We're reaching out to known vendors in town that are general contractors. Um, Ed Townsend, H and Car. Um, subcontractors like Tindal, um, AC Group, which is in these current quotes. Um, when it's, you know. Not required to do official requests for proposal advertising. Then we reach out to vendors that we're made aware of. Um, obviously they still have to be licensed, you know, they have to have a North Carolina general contractor license. And they have to carry the required Board of Education policy insurance that most contractors do anyway. So if you know of any other contractors who might be interested, just send them my way and we'll request quotes from them.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. That is all of my informational items for this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Love. Five twenty three, let's take a five minute break. And again, we thank the schools for presenting your school improvement plans and we look forward to great student achievement as a result of your hard work. Um, we'll take a five minute break and then we'll come back and do students of the month and employees of the month. Thank you all for coming. We're also going to do a holiday card presentations, uh, after the break, thank you. Alrighty. If I can have your attention, we'll go ahead and get, um, reconvene here because we need to, um. Adjourn in a few minutes to make it to the band concerts, alright. So, next item on the agenda is, uh, it's actually the superintendent's report, but we're going to move to the students of the month. And the holiday card, uh, competition. So, um, I'll turn this over to Dr. Johnson for students of the month.
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, we do appreciate everyone being here, see a lot in, uh, attendance tonight, see a lot of students, see a lot of parents. It's always great, uh, to have our faculty members here as well. We heard from our middle school and. We heard from our middle school and high school, and I agree with Dr. Malinas, uh, they did a fantastic job. Uh, we've got, uh, several of our principals here. Uh, so, uh, I think principals, I think we, you gotta know how we do this. Uh, and so we're going to get started with our November Students of the Month. Uh, Mr. Lowe has that pulled up, uh, if you will. Uh, Principal Dirks, if you'll come ahead and come on forward. Elsie Carr Elementary School, is it? Principal Dirks, is it Gail? How do I, Gail? Uh, so Elsie Carr Elementary School, uh, Student of the Month for November. These are our November Students of the Month. Gail Moreno Torres. Gail has a pleasant personality and an excellent attitude toward learning. He began kindergarten with a good foundation of academic skills, including letter identification, sounds, and number recognition. Fantastic. He is a hard worker and demonstrates excellent behavior at school. Gail consistently puts forth his best effort in his classwork. He is a kind student, a friend to his classmates, and shows gratitude and appreciation to all of his teachers. We are very proud of Gail. LCK Elementary School, uh, November Student of the Month, Gail Moreno Torres.
Gail, congratulations.
Sure, you absolutely can. Next tonight, we have Dr. Harding and our Butler Avenue Elementary School. November Student of the Month is Vivian Padilla. Yes, Vivian is a prime example of our dark horse motto. She goes, she shows gratitude both to her teachers and her peers. She works hard in the classroom and always strives to do her best. We are so proud of her and delighted to have her represent Butler Avenue Elementary School as our November Student of the Month, Miss Vivian Padilla. She, she had her principal also, Max. Next tonight is Dr. Carroll and for our November Student of the Month, we, from Sunset Avenue, we have Mr. Braden Allen. So the write-up here says, Braden exemplifies the word gratitude. He is always kind to his friends and helpful to classmates in need, no matter what the subject may be. He loves to read and take AR tests. He also enjoys reading to his teachers and peers. Braden takes school very seriously and always strives to be a horse. Great job, Braden. I was good until he said he likes to take AR tests. He lost me there. Thank you, Braden, great job. And Dr. Dr. Facen has our, uh, Student of the Month available and ready for Sampson Middle School. Sampson Middle School Student of the Month, Miss Elizabeth Hales. Elizabeth is an enthusiastic student. She always participates in class discussions and is willing to lend anyone a helping hand. Elizabeth is conscientious about her work and is also very friendly and polite to teachers and peers. I truly enjoy teaching Lizzie. Sampson Middle School Student of the Month for November, Miss Elizabeth Hales, Lizzie Hales.
My wife has thought her twice.
Good job, Lizzie. Well, I'm super excited about this because I think this has only happened twice in my seven year, uh, going on seven years that we have all the Students of the Month here. Uh, but we do have our Clinton High School November Student of the Month, Miss Ruby Davila. Uh, and, uh, Ruby excels in and out of the classroom. She sets the tone for the class and encourages other cadets and students. While academically, she works hard to achieve the goals she sets for herself. She is also an accomplished athlete. I believe we recognized her last month for, uh, the work she did with cross-country. She led the cross-country team to the state level as an, and is an excellent asset on the basketball court. Let us introduce and welcome to you tonight, Miss Ruby Davila. That always warms my heart to do that. Usually, uh, Dr. Malinas has the pleasure to do that. We do thank, uh, Ms. Peterson and her pre, uh, her kind of filling in, uh, tonight with Dr. Malinas being an in-cat. Uh, next tonight, and we do have several art teachers with us. So, uh, principals, when you come up, uh, to do our, um, uh, our Christmas artwork, uh, I'm going to ask if the art teacher's here to come up, uh, with you as well. Uh, so we're going to get started again, uh, at, uh, LCK for our holiday card presentations. So, um, at Elsie Carr Elementary, we have, uh, Mr. Sebastian Gutierrez. Yes, Ms. Cole, anything you would like to say about Sebastian or his artwork that is before us tonight?
Sebastian is a very talented artist.
We can tell.
We're having a holiday theme this year and we talked all about snowman and the winter buns and we decided to, uh, come up with a little holiday sign all on your own.
I think it looks beautiful. You can do a fist bump if you don't want to do a handshake.
Keep up the good work, okay? Great job, great job, thank you so much.
Awesome work. Right here, let's go. Okay. Uh, next tonight, although, um, Emerson is not here, we do have her card up on the screen, uh, from Butler Avenue, uh, Ms. Slack is the art teacher. Uh, and, uh, oh, the joy of the holidays, we've got a dark horse up there. Uh, but, uh, the Butler Avenue is, uh, Emerson Owens. Love that. Sunset. How do I pronounce that first name? Briani, uh, Briani Sorta Mesa, uh, is, uh, our student from, uh, Sunset. She is in the fifth grade. Uh, her art teacher's Miss Strickland. Um, and, um, oh, the joy of the holidays, we've got the horse up there and candy canes. Very beautiful and, uh, I was trying to look back at the portrait, this back, right back side over there. That's very nice, beautiful. Great job to, uh, Briani. How about from our middle school, Dr. Facen is our person in attendance. Uh, we've got, uh, Nathan Sarnar, Sampson Middle School, oh, the joy of the holidays, grade seven. Uh, wonderful job there, uh, fantastic. And we support, uh, the hard work that's going on in the art class at Sampson Middle School. Great job. Our high school is Miss Lydia Jackson, she is with us tonight. Uh, Lydia is a senior, uh, and we've got a beautiful portrait here, uh, Lydia Jackson. Uh, of course, we all know Mr. Ray. Uh, Mr. Ray, anything you would like to say about, uh, Mrs. Jackson's artwork?
Very awesome, yeah, great job.
And just found out Lydia's birthday is tomorrow. I will just like to point out, because I know Tracy pretty well, go to church with them. Um, your hair was a different color in that picture. Uh, I didn't, I, I didn't know if you noticed that. Great, great stuff, great stuff. And then the board chair is like, I taught Tracy. Uh, that's, that's great stuff, great stuff. Uh, always great and, uh, wonderful to, uh, highlight our students. They do, coming from someone, and I've actually told Mr. Ray this before, it's coming from someone who is like the most, uh, un-academic, not when it comes to artistic, uh, artistic, that is fantastic. I, I can't do any of that. Now, he told me he could teach me. Uh, but, uh, uh, we'll, we'll see about that sometime, Mr. Ray. But again, appreciate everyone, appreciate, uh, the parents who have came out to support their students. Appreciate our art teachers that came out tonight as well as the principals, uh, for our Students of the Month and our, um, our art holiday card presentations. We're going to go back, John, to our November Employees of the Month.
Let's give them all a round of applause.
Yes. Maybe I'll do a better job with this since this is what I normally do, uh, each month. But our November Employees of the Month, One Dark Course, United with Purpose for Action. We have one of our pre-K teachers that we're going to highlight tonight from Elsie Carr Elementary School, Miss Elizabeth Johnson. Miss Johnson serves as an NC pre-K teacher and is a, and is wonderful at what she does. She takes pride in her work and in her relationships with her students. Miss Johnson serves as a grade-level chair and is a great leader for us at LCK. She is compassionate and always willing to lend a helping hand to others without hesitation. She works diligently to help her students succeed and reach their fullest potential so that they are kindergarten-ready. We are blessed to have Miss Johnson as a part of our LCK family. November Employee of the Month for LCK is Miss Elizabeth Johnson. Over at Butler, our Employee of the Month, uh, is Miss April Lewis. Miss Lewis puts a lot of time and effort into the BAS Fall Festival. She exemplifies exceptional leadership, working tirelessly to ensure that each task is completed in preparation for the event, and she does it with a smile. The success of this event is a direct result of her dedicated service, securing donations, planning games and activities, and making sure there were no loose ends. She is always kind, uplifting, and positive. She speaks highly of our students, works diligently to meet their needs, and provides invaluable support to our staff. Our Butler Avenue Elementary School Employee of the Month is April Lewis. Sunset Avenue Elementary School, November Employee of the Month is Miss Sarah Holland. Miss Holland is truly an asset to the Sunset Avenue team. She is always willing to help in whatever capacity she is needed, driving a bus, helping the nurse as a first responder, or assisting with diabetic students. She is also an awesome greeter in the hallways in the morning, always positive and uplifting with staff and all of the students. She really is a team player and we are blessed to have her at Sunset Avenue School. November Sunset Avenue Elementary School Employee of the Month, Miss Sarah Holland. We saw her earlier tonight and I'm, and I noted this, Sampson Middle School Employee of the Month for November is Miss Tandaniqa TK Carr. Miss Carr is a kind, dedicated, and caring educator who prioritizes the children's educational needs even sometimes before her own health. She is a true example of what it is to go above and beyond the call of duty. Miss Carr is truly deserving of this honor and we are thankful to have her on our team at Sampson Middle School. November SMS Employee of the Month is Tandaniqa TK Carr. Our high school, Clinton High School, Anthony Smooth Peterson. Mr. Peterson demonstrates exceptional dedication to his students, consistently creating an enjoyable learning environment through engaging lesson plans. He is kind, considerate, considerate, and deeply connected with his students, making himself available for guidance and support. His positivity, humor, and strong interpersonal skills have fostered a close bond with his students, making learning both productive and engaging. Mr. Peterson's students say he is always honest in his responses and he really is a great teacher. He is funny, kind, and always encouraging his students to work harder. Clinton High School November Employee of the Month, Anthony Smooth Peterson. Central Services, oh wow. Employee of the Month, Miss Nicole Hayes. Absolutely. I'm not sure these three or two sentences would, uh, yeah, we could go well above and beyond this, but Miss Nicole Hayes never hesitates to assist, especially with all the end-of-the-year banquets and celebrations, and also during the summer break when prepping for the new year. She is always on standby to help no matter what the occasion. Miss Hayes is an inspiration and a back- Ms. Hayes is an inspiration and the backbone of CCS Central Services. And the Board of Education, November employee of the month, Central Services, Nicole Hayes. Fantastic. Always a pleasure to uh do the work and uh see our uh employees get the, almost, they get some, some good notoriety there, but they're doing great things, and we appreciate all of our employees in the system. We thank them for choosing Clinton City Schools as their work home. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson, again, we congratulate the students of the months, employees of the month, and uh holiday card winners, those, those students are very talented, very talented. Wesley thinks his artistic skills are limited, you just see mine. Alright, so next item on the agenda is uh the superintendent's report, Dr. Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I, you know, other than seeing those smiling faces tonight, uh one of the things that we, I, I, I get just a, the, the great opportunity to do each month is to bring you the good news. I work, I, I'm, I'm gonna be honest with you, I work hours on this, because I wanna make sure, number one, that I don't miss anybody. Uh, and number two, that I give them the recognition and the notoriety that they deserve. So John, if you will, most of you will have already have seen the shout outs, uh but I still like to include this, uh and we go over this, we go over the shout outs pretty quick. Uh, but I just always wanna make sure that everyone is uh getting the highlights that they deserve, first tonight is Nurse Rayner, Nurse Rayner is uh one, the nurse at Butler Avenue. Shout out to Nurse Rayner for her persistence and professionalism in treating injured students, of course, I know a lot about this situation, uh but uh, I'll keep it brief. Uh, the student was injured, had a head injury, they came, checked the student out, uh from um, an outside organization, wanted to just uh kinda, just let the student go back. She was persistent, and uh, the student uh then um had a level three concussion. So uh, Nurse Rayner, great job, we appreciate you being persistent in your efforts to make sure that the student was treated as they needed to be treated. Uh, so thank you to Ms. Nurse Rayner there. Uh, we've highlighted the marching band several times this year, but the marching band, I don't even know, like, I knew that this was happening, but they performed two shows in one day. Uh, it was the last event that they had that, that of the year, uh and it was uh two events, and we're gonna see them momentarily uh for our uh band concert, but they performed. Uh, at the Brick Capital Classic, which was at Lee Senior High School, and they also performed at the Midway Raider Roundup on the same day. Uh, and so you can see all of their winnings, they did a great job. Uh, and John and I, we, John always puts the scorecard up there, and we always talk about it, but what's interesting to me is how it like one, you can be 3A. And then at the very next one, you're 5A, because that's just based on the like, the number, like the, how big the schools are that come to the, the event. Uh, but again, fantastic job, first, second place, 3A and 5A, great job, and you've got some pictures there from those events, and great job to our uh marching band. Had a great season, uh and got better, I think, with each and every performance, uh great, great job. Uh, we had a, we were, we're doing these uh reading spotlights and math spotlights, and John will pull up Ms. Flora Reyes, she's our, one of our first grade teachers at Butler Avenue. And uh, yeah, yeah, way to go, Ms. Flora, uh, and she's doing a great job. Uh, I, I happened to go into her classroom uh before this was uh published, and just noted the work that she was doing in that small group right there. She does some really, really great work with her small group, uh teaching, uh, she, she, she has the fundamentals of letters down as good as anybody as I, as I've seen. Uh, does a great, great job, shout out to Ms. Flora Reyes, she was our first reading curriculum spotlight, so congratulations to Ms. Flora Reyes. Our first math curriculum spotlight was Ms. Samantha Naylor, Ms. Naylor is a fourth grade teacher uh at Sunset Avenue, she is uh doing a self-contained classroom this year. Uh, Ms. Naylor, there she is with her dog and her fiance, uh, she's gonna be getting married in May of 2025. Uh, she is rocking with the eye-ready classroom mathematics and doing a good job for us there, and we wanna thank Samantha and all of her hard work, and we are very grateful to have her at Sunset Avenue. Great job, Samantha. Uh, we're gonna see some of this and some other things that, um, in just a moment, but we did have our Taste of Culture and Rock Your Mox Week on November 12th through 15th. It was Native American Heritage Month uh in the month of November, you'll see a lot of my good news in just a moment, we'll see some pictures from that event in just a few seconds. Uh, I did, I think I noted this lo- last time, but we also did meet our Dark Horse Fellow Challenge Grant, and we thank all of our employees who assisted with that, which is going to help uh Dark Horse Fellows. To receive another hundred thousand dollars that will go directly to our students, and we're super excited about that. It's always exciting when you beat JK, uh, but uh, this was the game that, well, we were, uh, they, we had them in the Eastern semifinals. Probably in my opinion, I watched most of the games this year, this was probably our toughest game of the year. Uh, they, uh, we beat them two to one, uh, and we'll see other pictures uh again, but thank, we congratulated them for going on to the Eastern Finals. Shout out to Ms. Angelique Young, uh, who is being recognized by Governor Cooper and the North Carolina Commission of Indian Affairs for her contribution to the field of education during American Indian Heritage Month 2024. She attended a reception at the Executive Mansion this evening, way to go, and I would also ask while I'm talking about Ms. Young, that you continue to keep her in your thoughts and your prayers, please. Uh, but she's uh, she's, she's doing good, and we're just gonna keep her in our thoughts and our prayers. Uh, this will not be the only picture that you see, but uh, not only did we win the uh Eastern semifinals against JK, that not only did we beat Green Century in the finals. But again, 2A state champions, we'll just kinda just bypass this, because we're gonna see a lot of pictures in a few moments. Shout out to uh Ms. Elizabeth Davis, EC teacher at Butler Avenue. Ms. Davis represents Clinton City Schools as our Educator of Excellence for 2024, and she was honored in Greensboro as part of the EC Conference, that was not last week, it was a couple of weeks ago. But it was last week when we had it on the shout outs. Um, several educators here, I think we saw one earlier uh that was here, uh, but they received simple gifts, love of learning grants. We got Ms. Dominique Nikki Melvin, she received a $2,804 grant on coding adventures empowering students through B-bots in the library. We have Ms. Casey Avery and Ms. Sandra Kennedy, uh, they received a $909 grant for exploring the move, the moveless world of dairy. And then uh, another young lady that I know, Ms. Kimberly Johnson, got a $2,000 grant for writer's workshop. Big shout out to Ms. Bevelin Low, who is uh kinda working with the Anonymous Trust and overseeing those grants, and uh, we appreciate her hard work and her efforts that she's uh taken on. Uh, as another duty and responsibility. Then we have a great, and we're gonna see this a little bit later too, uh, but uh Bailey Waters, a senior in the Clinton High School Marching Band, auditioned and earned a spot in the Macy's Great American Martian Band. And uh, we support her efforts, and we, we were supposed to be looking for her, and we were gonna see, because we got a picture of her that we're gonna see actually at the event in just a few moments, so big shout out to Bailey Waters. Don't forget about our Christmas toy drive, we are taking toys all the way up to December the 13th, and those were our shout outs, and they have been shared with all of our faculty and staff. Now to my good news, some of these may or may not have been shared, we've already talked about Sampson Middle School, super excited about that. Uh, you all should have seen uh the newsletter, uh, the newsletter is basically my shout outs from that month that are sent out by Ms. Hayes and Ms. Iverson, they work on that uh newsletter and sent out, I believe we're on volume five already. Uh, so great job they're doing with that, we've already talked about Sampson Middle School being awarded one of the best middle schools in North Carolina from the US News and World Report. Uh, in honor of Native American Heritage Month, CCS and members of the Kohairi Tribal Center shared a meal and celebrated Taste of Culture on November the 7th. You can see some of uh the regalia uh there, um, and so definitely wanted to highlight that, we had a great event, and uh always great to share with our uh local tribal center. Uh, related as well, our CCS Indian Education Coordinator, Ms. Desha Emanuel, she published the first edition of the CCS Indian Ed Newsletter in November. Uh, you can see that, we had one of our students, uh, Ms. Bruinson, that was highlighted there on the side. A big shout out for Desha for working hard to get that first newsletter published. Just a minute, John, I'll ask you to play that video, all pre-K 12 students were treated to the Clinton City Schools Indian Educational Social Assembly this past Tuesday, November the 26th. Which included song and dance for members of the Kohairi Tribal Center and other indigenous people groups of North Carolina, John, if you click on that video, we'll watch a little bit of this, and you'll get to see what our students got to see last Tuesday. You have that available for you, great, great performance, I was able to get to the one at Sampson Middle School, it was fantastic. Uh, I enjoyed uh seeing the dances, enjoyed seeing all of our dancers, we had a couple of our students that were also, and former students that were also out there dancing. Learned a lot about uh our uh Kohairi Tribal Center and uh the heritage and the dances and how those dances originated. Uh, I wanna say the one that I went to at the middle school, I thought our students did a fantastic job, sat there, I mean, they were on the edge of their seats, uh glued to the performances. Uh, they were uh very respectful, uh honoring the cultures and the traditions of our Kohairi and indigenous people, and a great, great job, so I thank you to everyone. Uh, thank you to Desha and our others that uh helped to uh put that together, and great, great job, had several visitors as well, and I appreciate their hard work and their efforts. Um, on November 16th, we had a Haitian parent session, although it was a small group, we do think our presenters and parents were showing up to discuss Haitian culture and the needs of our students. I do believe on the left side there, there, uh, there's a couple, and they're assisting Sampson Community College, and I believe we made a good contact, I believe Dr. Van and Dr. Malinas have already had a second meeting with them. Uh, and we are looking at having a uh non-English speaking event in the month of February uh for our Latino and Haitian families. Uh, and again, we know that this is a growing area of, of our uh population and our demographics, and uh, again, I think it was a great event, and we look forward to continued work uh with uh that group of students. Dark Horse Fellows uh recently got to travel to, well, traveled one time, and then they had a, a presenter to come in, uh, but Dark Horse Fellows traveled to UNCP, I was actually there on that same day with Desha. Uh, we went to a, a, a local event for our district, uh, but Dark Horse Fellows traveled to UNCP, where they visited the School of Education, toured the campus and the Museum of the Southeast American Indian on Friday, November the 1st. Of course, they got a tour of UNCP, got a couple of pictures there, and then later that, uh, that month on November the 9th, uh, Dr. Tricia McNe was the Director of the Transformational Scholarship Program. Uh, we are asking all of our Dark Horse Fellows to put in uh for the NCS, North Carolina State University Transformational Scholars uh Program this year, because that can be additional monies that they can get to help them to become teachers. So they heard from Dr. McNe uh on November the 9th. Here is Bailey, we already talked to you about Bailey, but here is the picture from the event, again, Macy's Great American Marching Mountain, if that's part of your family traditions or not, but that's one thing, that my wife uh, uh, is a part of our family traditions, we always sit down. When I do sit down, it's not very a lot, uh, about at least 15 minutes, I got, got to see that event, uh, but it's always good, and we appreciate Bailey's uh representing uh her school and the town of Clinton uh and her state very well. Uh, speaking of grants, we've already mentioned that uh Ms. Bevelin is uh over uh simple gifts, uh, but Bright Ideas is uh from uh our corporate sponsor, South River. Uh, and uh, so uh, Ms. Bevelin Low recently received a Bright Ideas Education Grant from the North Carolina Electric Cooperatives. Uh, and attended a celebration luncheon at the Dorothy and Roy Park Alumni Center on the campus of North Carolina State University. Uh, my father worked for uh the, South River for about 38 years, so uh, I know the great work that they're doing there, and we appreciate all their work uh to give money back to our local communities. Sampson Middle School hosted a career day on November the 13th, uh, had several exhibits and presenters from at least 30 different businesses and organizations, you've got several photos from that event, great job. To Dr. Fason and his team for organizing that, I was not able to make that event, but I've heard uh very, lots of great things about it. Dr. Dave talked about this when he presented, I did make this event, uh, so uh, on November 22nd, we had the Sampson Community College Health Science Fair, we got the tour, uh, the facility. I was real intrigued by this picture from the left, so uh, those are like, um, uh, like, sort of like robots, and that, and like, you can watch their eyes move, they breathe, and all kinds of stuff, and you can do all kinds of. Uh, you, you know, you can, you can uh simulation where you can see where you messed up, where you went wrong, they can go into cardiac arrest, they can have all kinds of things, so it's really, really interesting. I don't know that our kids, they didn't like the blinking eyes, but uh, but that was a real, uh, a real, uh, real, real good treat. Uh, and uh, of course, you know, know that we need, um, uh, what was the word we used, not essential, no, what was that? Essential, we know that nurses are essential to a, uh, our, our town, so we thank Sampson Community College for hosting that event. Just found this out, I highlighted this last um month, but we didn't know until yesterday, but Mr. Juan Romero Ruta is a winner. Of the National Quest Bridge Scholarship. He is going to Columbia. On a full ride worth over $325,000. Huge congratulations to uh Juan, I know his parents are excited, I, I mean, I can't even imagine, but going to Columbia University, Ivy League. Uh, so fantastic to Mr. Juan Romero Ruta. Uh, also wanna highlight Ms. Evan Gillespie, she has been a member of the North Carolina High School Athletic Association Student-Athlete Advisory Council for the last two years. They spotlighted her, and uh, we were able to get this photo, and uh, we thank uh Evan, she's a three-sport athlete for us, she's done a lot of work with the High School Athletic Association and their Student Advisory Council, so great job, Evan, keep up the great work, she's a senior for us. Speaking of some great work, shout out to Mr. Ryan Freeman, uh, don't know how much y'all know about soccer, but Ryan plays a very, very difficult position, he is our, the, the defensive uh midfielder. If, if you know anything about soccer, you don't wanna be the defensive midfielder, you gotta take a lot of blows and get in there and put your nose in there. Uh, but he was the uh Sportsmanship Award winner, uh, so of the 2A finals, congratulations, Ryan, great job, great season. Another shout out to, uh, this is a junior here, Ryan is a senior, but a shout out to one of our juniors, Brant Sumner, he was recognized as the championship game MVP. He broke the tie in the first half, which was uh the game winner, so shout out to Brant, uh, and good news, we get to bring him back next year. Found this out today. Senior CHS Soccer Standout Griffin Williams. He is a beast, uh, has recently learned that he will be recognized as a US Soccer Coaches Association All Mid-Atlantic Selection. First male soccer player to receive this honor in CHS history. Great job, Griffin Williams. Love to watch Griffin play. Uh, again, we've got several student athletes that are gonna receive all kinds of awards uh next Thursday night, I'm not gonna read all these names, but we've got all county, all conference, and all the sports. Wanted to make sure that you saw their names up there, again, they'll be recognized in person next Thursday night uh at our uh, um, Fall Athletic Awards Night. But you can see all the different awards uh there again, uh, and we appreciate uh all the hard work, I will point out, uh. Ma'am. Yes, it's the same night. Yep. Ours is at 5:30 and they start at 6:00. Next Thursday night. Yep. Uh, but uh, definitely wanted to shout out all of those uh award winners, definitely wanna shout out to three All-State winners, Griffin Williams, Oscar Dasiak, and Holden Spel. Williams, Oscar Dasiac, and Holden Spell. Shout out to Coach Spell, won his second. He won his second state title. He is the Conference Coach of the Year, Region Five Coach of the Year, the 2A State Coach of the Year, the Public Small School Coach of the Year from the North Carolina Soccer Association. And he did find out recently that he will be inducted into the North Carolina Soccer Coaches Association Hall of Fame. So big shout out to Coach Spell and all of his work with our boys and all of the work he's done over the years. Our football team won their senior night football game, 36-14 against Fairmont. Got a couple of pictures there. Want to shout out our seniors and parents for their hard work over the last four years. Enormous congratulations to our men's soccer team. They defeated Southwestern Randolph three to one. If you were at the game, that score is not indicative of the score of the game. We actually dominated that game. But three to one win, we'll take it. We were the only game that was not decided by one goal. Great, great season, 28 and 2. I felt so bad for Southwestern Randolph. When you've been on the other side of the coin, like some of us have at this table, and you've had a child to lose that event, it's difficult, but we're glad that we could be the winners. Got a couple pictures there. I love these pictures because one's like just joy, and then one's like, man, I can't believe we won this thing. But, but super excited for our young men. If you would like to purchase soccer state championship fan wear, I've got you a link there. They've got everything, polos, jackets, hoodies, all kinds of stuff. So, yeah, everything. So if you want to get you some fan wear, you've got that. And those are my good news and items and shout outs for this week. Couple of thank you cards. This kind of goes right in line with good news, but this is Graves Memorial Presbyterian Church. They donated $200 to our food pantry, but they also sent us a note and said, "We are so appreciative of all you do to help meet the food insecurities of students in Clinton City Schools. We hope this small donation helps. $100 to the CHS Food Pantry, $100 to the SMS Food Pantry, In Christ, GMPC Presbyterian Women Circle Number One." So thank you to Graves Memorial Presbyterian Church and their $200 donation. Do have another thank you. This is from the family of Ted Herring, and it says, "Thank you, Clinton City Schools. Thank you for your prayers and support during our loss. Your thoughtfulness at this time means more than words can say. Thank you for your kindness." The family of Ted Herring. Another thank you card. Here is from Nurse Gina Ray. "I want to thank you all for the beautiful lantern and many acts of kindness shown to me and my family. Your love, prayers, and support are of great comfort to us as we grieve my father's death." Nurse Gina. John 1622, "So you have sorrow now, but I will see you again, and your hearts will rejoice, and no one will take your joy from you." Nurse Gina. Couple of emails I wanted to read. This came from Monica Williams. She is a pre-K teacher at LCK. She wrote this to me. "Good evening. I wanted to reach out to thank Ms. Devon Owens for the district walk and talk last week. It was very informative and a great reflection tool as an early childhood educator. The tools we use for observations were very thorough and easy to use. Also enjoyed collaborating with other colleagues at different grades, content areas, as we were conducting our walk and talks. Also wanted to acknowledge Principal Dirks on how he welcomed us as we walked into the building for the walk and talk at LCK. He took the time to explain to us the demographics and school information, as well as reaching out to him if we needed anything. As we were leaving, he also showed us his appreciation by giving us a token of appreciation. Thank you for implementing this valuable tool district-wide." Monica Williams. And one more is from Danielle Graham, and she wanted to highlight, we've already highlighted this person, but she says, "I certainly hope I'm finding you well and blessed. I'm reaching out to you for the purpose of acknowledging Ms. Angelique Young for her assistance during the absence of Ms. Tata Oats. Like Ms. Oats, Angelique is awesome." Danielle Graham, Sampson County 418 Court, Juvenile Restitution, Juvenile Psychological Services Coordinator. So I always like to share that good news with you. Just a couple of items for you tonight from me. You've got the newest enrollment numbers up there. John, I'll show you that real quick, where we are. K-12, we're right at 3,000. I think, what's that, John, 2997, which is higher than we've been in quite a few years, quite honestly. And then our pre-K is 3155. So numbers look pretty good across the district. The next item that I wanted to highlight, John has already highlighted, so we can just skip my next highlight, John, because John noted that we've already met with the group from Woda Cooper today. Some, the other thing I wanted to highlight, and keep going, John, you've already addressed that. That's about the Woda Cooper meeting. If you go to the next page. You, I think you guys, I think everyone is aware that North Carolina High School Athletic Association is going to eight classifications next year. We're going to be in the 4A classification. 4A. Four. Yep. And this is right here. If you would like to see the other schools, now we don't know conferences, don't know conferences. May, I'm here, and we may not know that till May. But these are the other schools that could potentially be, well, not potentially, they will be in 4A. No, and I'm hearing that the conferences are going to be multi-A. So there, there's going to be 3As with 4As. There may be some 2As with 4As in the conferences, because they don't want to have all this travel. So, yeah, yeah. So we'll have to just wait on that. But those will be the teams in our conferences. There are some changes. There are quite, there are quite a bit of changes, like, like our neighbors that we don't like to say their name, that we play a lot, they're, they're not in 4A. They're in 3A. So.
But if they have a 3A, 4A split, which they will have to deal with.
That's, that's true. That's true. But again, but again, got all that for, got all that for you. There were a few updates to the basketball schedule. You've got all the spring schedules there. I've got a bunch of dates for you, a bunch of dates that are coming up. The biggest dates, I know that Dr. Brunson's already sent this out to you, are at the very bottom of that, John, there's some board, possible board dates. I am going to have to go ahead and let you know, though, May 1st is another situation like tonight, that is the band concert. I found that out from John. I think John sent that to me Monday. So we can look at a different date, or we could do what we're doing tonight and just end early. Those are the items I have for members, unless you have any questions.
Question from Dr. Johnson.
Jonathan, I got, I was waiting to see if you were going to put it on your good news. We got scoreboards at the middle school.
Yes.
And board member slash Booster Club here, there's been some discussion about the Booster Club in the community doesn't focus on anything but football. Or we don't help out with the middle school. You know, they, they, there's been a lot of discussion about that, and the Booster Club has paid for the installation of the scoreboards at the middle school. So the school didn't have to come off of the money. The Booster Club paid for that. We're also paying a third of the class championship rings for the soccer team. So there's a lot of stuff that goes on that the Booster Club helped us out with that isn't as visible as a Friday night football game. But I just want to let the middle school know, you know, that the Booster Club did help out, and soccer teams helped out, and we help everybody.
Amen. Thank you to the middle school.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Edgerton, for setting the record straight. All right. Any other comments for the board members? Yeah, Dr. Johnson did say, I did set out the new date, so now may have a look at May 1 again. And also, we, we were so thrilled with the middle school, high school presentations tonight. So hopefully, we can do the school visit next Tuesday, December 10th, 8:30 at the middle school, 10:30 at the high school. If we can get that together, I'd appreciate it. I do have an update on Mr. West. You know, he was the gentleman that gave us the, donated the Petro College Street School. He is now working on the other four schools for us. Yeah, he's, I met with him on a couple of weeks ago now, I guess, and he has some extra time on his hands. So he's working on those other schools. So we have portraits of the other schools as well.
They can present them one at a time if they come in, if you're going to wait, going to get them all done?
Very good. How would you like that to happen? I'm sure Mr. West will accommodate.
It just, it doesn't matter, right?
Yep.
Whatever it is, it's for him.
I'll, I'll talk with him and let you know. All right. Any other questions, comments, thoughts from the board? We said we were going to adjourn at 6:20. I have 6:20. If you're needing staff development, Ms. Hayes will, just let her know if you need to go to any of those events or log into our subscription, because it's already paid for. Our next meeting is Monday, January 27th at 4 o'clock. And if you will get back to me on those other spring dates, and how you would like to handle that May 1 date. So I have a happy holiday, everybody out there. Thank you all for all the work you do. We appreciate it. We may not say it enough, but we do appreciate all that you do for our students in our district. I need a motion to adjourn.
I made that motion.
Uh-oh. Just one of you at a time. Motion made by the pastor, second by Dr. Rodriguez. All in favor, it'd be no matter what I. Motion carrot. Take a few minutes and move over to the auditorium if you can.
If you would like.
Oh, lunch, dinner is provided for the board. Where?
You would like a copy of Family North Carolina Magazine? I've got that right.